... purposes to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) fight of United States of America and for the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Casey?
Present.
Mr. Reynolds?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Martinelli?
Present.
Mr. Kander?
Present.
Dr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Sheridan?
Here.
Mrs. McQuaid?
Present.
I am present through.
Now Wayne Leclair from PSBA has a presentation for us along with Britta Berickman, correct? Okay. Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Britta Berickman, the Director of School Services for the Pennsylvania School Board Association. And what I'd like to do is take the first few minutes to walk you through a PowerPoint that talks a little bit about sort of PSBA's philosophical approach towards a search, what distinguishes us from other search options, and then we'll take a few minutes to talk to you about process and some of the elements involved in that. So to start, I'd like to highlight a few things about a PSBA search specifically. We have researched this field, we do this full-time, we have unmatched experience by any other group, meaning we do more superintendent searches in the state of Pennsylvania than any other group, and we've used our experience and our research to inform our search strategy. Our search is customized to meet the needs of any individual community and/or school board. So while we'll share with the board best practices, what we've seen work, what we've seen may have some limitations, ultimately it's the board's search and we're facilitating this process on your behalf. And we've done, as I said, more searches than any other group. We've been in this business for over 20 years, we do more searches on an annual basis, we're very familiar with the market, what happens in various searches, sort of the nuances of this type of a search, as well as some of the potential pitfalls. We also offer a national search at an affordable price, should the board choose to pursue a national presence, I'll talk to you a little bit about that as well. So our advertising campaign tends to anchor around saturating the Pennsylvania market, promoting your opportunity, refueling, meaning in the mid-Atlantic, moving into the regional northeast, and then having a presence on the national level. The reason we did this is we did some research a few years ago, looking at the credentialing of other states for superintendents coming into the state of Pennsylvania, as Pennsylvania does not have any reciprocity agreements with other states related to certifications. And what we found were those within the region moving into the northeast had more similarities to the credentialing process here in Pennsylvania. So we targeted our marketing based on where the greatest ease in terms of credentialing and preparation programs in other states aligned with Pennsylvania. We've also recently introduced PSBA's Career Gateway. This is an online venue, typically what you see for individuals seeking this type of positions, they're not going to local newspapers, they're not going to those types of venues to seek out these types of positions. We've established our Career Gateway, which is an online advertising and recruiting tool to really establish a direct venue for folks to seek out. We went live in February of this year, and since that point, we've received over 87,000 visits, with an average just under 5,000 visits per week. And within this, potential candidates can populate profiles, and we have, at this point, 236 potential candidates who are seeking superintenances. So we have a pretty direct access to folks within the Pennsylvania market who are seeking superintenances and who are credentialed for such positions. This, oh, there they are, I apologize, it's a little bit difficult to see, that's actually a map of Pennsylvania. And this shows you where the greatest geography in terms of the visits are occurring. So you can certainly see there's, you know, substantial activity near the urban hubs, if you will, but we really have a presence across the state. If you look at all of your education positions, this is the position in which people are most likely to move for such a position, now, for the right opportunity and whatnot. And as you can see, we've really touched basically every corner of the state in terms of reaching out to potential candidates. In terms of our regional promotion, we have established relationships based on that strategy I spoke to earlier in terms of the credentialing with the above six states, Connecticut, Delaware, Ohio, Massachusetts, New Jersey, and Maryland, that allows us to advertise through their equivalent of PASO or the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators. So we have direct access to some of those states in terms of where their potential candidates may also be looking. As I said, we're really finding that people seeking such positions really are not looking to some of your, you know, your career builders or your, you know, these types of venues. To support that, our visits really support somewhat of our strategy. We've had nearly 80,000 visits within Pennsylvania, and you can see some of our targeted audience is really support our strategy in terms of recruitment and advertising efforts. We also have our national component, we do use SchoolSpring as a national advertising venue, I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a moment. We are a member of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, that gives us a few benefits that are also benefit to the boards that we're servicing, and that this connects us with our counterparts in 39 other states, meaning other consultants, which has two benefits, one for recruitment purposes, but also should you be seeking or looking at a candidate later in your search, and we're looking for more on-the-ground reference information, we can call our counterparts in the local state, get more on-the-ground information about those candidates as opposed to just making cold calls. And then finally, we've introduced Career Gateway on a national level, and certainly our visits and the locations that we have touched support that effort. So in terms of comparing SchoolSpring versus other venues, another well-known location for national advertising for such positions is Top School Jobs, which is education weeks advertising venue. And you can see that SchoolSpring really has been pretty substantial in terms of their reach and their scope. And ultimately, all of this advertising and recruitment and the exposure is intended to generate the most opportunities and the most options for a board to make some selections. Career Gateway, as I said, we've introduced on a national level, and I'm happy to say that we have touched every state, the District of Columbia, we've really gone national with this effort, and, you know, folks are coming to this site to seek out Pennsylvania opportunities on a pretty regular basis. Again, looking at our non-Pennsylvania visits, so Pennsylvania's really the effort in terms of saturating that market, as those people are already credentialed, and then going to the other states, it's very much aligned with where we've targeted our efforts. The one that stands out as always curious and, you know, interesting is Florida. Someone in Florida apparently wants to come to Pennsylvania, and, you know, maybe at some point we'll find out what that's about, but that would be the one that we're not targeting per se based on our strategy, but we're, we have a presence in Florida at this point. In terms of our recruiting campaign, we have a pretty substantial knowledge of the market and the candidates, the districts, and top leaders. We're well-positioned in this in that we are full-time searchers. We're not doing this part-time, we're on a continual basis, not only doing searches, but we're, you know, doing references, we're in interviews, we're really in communication with the market and those seeking such positions. And being full-time, we're really having a lot of dialogue with those in the market at a given time. Therefore, if you were to select PSBA and after getting guidance from the board, we could really start aligning what we know of the candidates and who's in the market with what you're telling us you're seeking in your next superintendent for schools. We do have a Consulting Solutions Network. This is a group of retired superintendents and executive directors from IUs across the state that partner with us in this work. This expands our reach, it gives us more connections across the state, and really has been a benefit, again, both in our recruitment efforts, but also in the essential reference checking effort. Within Career Gateway, we can send out notifications based on their preferences, so of that group of 200-plus potential candidates who are seeking superintenances, if they align with your geography, your size, those types of things, they will get an automatic notification of this opportunity directing them to your posting, should you choose to work with us. So as soon as we go on the market, we're sending out notifications to folks who align their preferences with the demographics of spring. Plus, we have a database of educators, so we can do more targeted recruitment, more targeted notification beyond those who have already indicated an interest. Our Consulting Solutions members are listed here and the ground pieces. More importantly, what you'll see on the next slide is where we're geographically located. So what you see is we've got a pretty wide network across the state, really, again, that effort to touch as much of the state as we can, as our strategy and our effort is to saturate the Pennsylvania market, and I think we've established that. The second piece that becomes critically important is the reference and background checks. We take them all the time to approach, there are no guarantees, but we make every effort to provide the board with as much information regarding your candidates as we can, so the board can make an informed decision about your next superintendent. We do that in a few ways. Certainly, we're collecting and reviewing all of the required clearances, we're checking for ethics violations. On average, we're making 16 calls, both on and off, we've provided reference lists, so this is a pretty comprehensive question and answer of each of these calls, really to generate as much information and as well-rounded information to provide the board with the information necessary to make a decision. And then we have an option of also doing a social media search. So in summary, before Wayne goes through more of the process elements, our role, we exclusively represent the board. We are your association, and we're here to work for the board, facilitate the process, and ultimately recognize that this is the board's process, and we're here as your consultant. We have full-time dedicated search staff who are committed to this work, we've researched this work, and we're fully engaged. We have a secure paperless application review process available to the board, should you choose to utilize that. We have the resources of the association behind us. What that means is searches can often take, you know, you have to see how it unfolds. We have a policy division, we have a communications division, we have a legal staff, we've got all of these internal resources available to us, which makes us confident that regardless of what happens in your search, we're here to support your board in your district through this process. We have the Consulting Solutions Partnership that gives us that additional reach beyond those on staff, and those are some of the key differences. So from there, I'll turn it over to Wayne to talk you through the process.
Yes, thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you. As Britta says, my name is Wayne Leclair, I'm a Senior School Services Consultant. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to talk through some of the process, and each board member has one of our proposals in your packet there, and I'll refer to some of the other documents that I gave you through also. The one thing Britta did say is, you know, this is your search, so we do this all the time, we can provide you with advice, best practices, give you, tell you what we've seen work, what hasn't worked, that kind of thing, and we've got to customize a search to meet the board. One of the other documents you have in there is called a menu options. It's the various phases of a search and different pieces of a search, a separate document in there. And what that can be used for also is to kind of customize a search, one of the programs that we do have. This proposal talks about two of our searches, two of our search programs, and again, either one can be customized, or you can do your own search at this point. But we're talking about the executive search program mainly this evening, and I want to go through the different phases of that. One of the first things that we do is, once the board decides to work with us, is we try and schedule a meeting with the board as quickly as possible. And we do that so that we can plan out the search, we can talk with the board members, we want to get an initial feeling of, you know, what are you expecting from the search, what are you looking for in that next superintendent, what are some of the needs, some of the issues that you have in the district? We like to gather as much information as we can, so that as we are recruiting for your search, and candidates have questions, we can speak to those questions, and we can kind of guide them through the recruitment process also. So we talk about not only the district itself, but communication protocols, the application, we want to finalize the advertising in that first meeting, because once we finalize that advertising, we can begin posting that next day. But we need the advertising and the recruitment started right away. Along the way, we're going to ask the board to make some decisions, and, you know, the advertising and recruitment piece is certainly one of those decisions, and once we have approval from the board, we're ready to go, and we can, like I said, get started at a moment's notice at that point. So we want to talk through all of that, as well as the objective performance standards that are in Act 141. Act 141 became effective in September of 2012, and it has certain requirements in the superintendent's contract, one of those is the superintendent's evaluation. So we kind of start a conversation with the board initially about that, about what you're going to be looking for as far as performance objectives for that superintendent, so we can carry that conversation throughout the search. Part of that is because that will become part of your negotiations with your new superintendent at the end, so it's important that the board has a clear understanding of that by the time they selected their candidate, because not only does that become part of the negotiations, but according to Act 141, those objective performance standards have to be mutually agreed upon, so they have to be agreed upon with you as well as the candidate at that point. So we want to make sure that when we get to the end of the search, that everybody has a clear understanding of that, so that that doesn't become another issue for discussion at the end of the search. The other thing that we do when we're talking to the boards about what they're looking for in the next superintendent and those types of things is, that's the beginning of, excuse me, what we call building a leadership profile, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the following pages here. The next page talks about candidate recruitment, and the candidate recruitment, Britta covered pretty well, again, it's national, it's regional, it's a local search. But some of the other things that we do also at this point is, when we start a search, we get together with PSBA, we start talking about, here's what the district is looking for, who do we know that matches the characteristics, the attributes that the board is looking for, and who do we need to reach out to? We do that as well as look for referrals. As Britta said, we do this on a full-time basis, so we know who's looking for positions. We know who's looking to make a move, we know where they're looking to make a move, what type of district that they're looking in, so that helps us also as we go through. Some of the other things that we do above what Britta said also, is we've kind of developed a relationship with some colleges and universities in Pennsylvania. These are 30 colleges and universities that offer leadership programs. And leadership programs are programs that administrators go through as part of their process of getting ready to get their superintendent letter of eligibility. And at that point, the people that go through that, the people that we've contacted with, we get in touch with them, and we send them the position announcement for that position, and they will post it for us, and they will distribute it, not only to their current enrollees, but to their alumni of their program. So that gets us out there in front of people that have actually gone through the leadership programs that we know are interested in potentially becoming a superintendent, or have become superintendents at that point, and that gets that information out to them. The one marketing piece that we use is also in your packet, we kind of did a sample for you tonight for this grand school district. And this is what we call our position announcement. And a position announcement talks about the superintendent position, and, you know, the characteristics and attributes that the board will be looking for, but it also gives more information on the school district, as well as information on the community and finances, and also tells people that are interested how to apply. So we utilize this in reaching out to people. When we have referrals or we're recruiting people, we put this out there, we kind of just did a kind of a mock-up with information that we got from your comprehensive plan and your website, so information that was available publicly. And certainly, this would be another piece that, before we put this out there, the board would approve it, we would certainly ask you and encourage you, give us any changes that you would want for this, and then we would send that out and utilize that in the recruiting efforts with the search at that point. So that's one of the things that we do. The other thing is that we're always talking to people, and our Consulting Solutions group is part of that. So not only do they help us with some of the recruitment, but they provide us with some good referrals, give us some directions as far as who we need to talk to and who we need to reach out to at that point. And then if the board is interested, we do do some targeted recruitment, there are some districts that we deal with that have a specific profile of a candidate that they're looking for, so we talk through that piece of it, and get some of our recruitment efforts for that also. So we are actively out there all the time as far as getting to know candidates and taking them through the recruitment period. One of the things that we would talk about initially in our initial meeting is not only the recruitment period, but we would want to sit down and we would want to establish a timeline for the search, because we know as a board, there's a lot of things going on, you're busy, schedules change, those types of things. So we try and set up some kind of timeline initially, so that we have some benchmarks, and we can keep the search on track at that point, and have a good understanding of where we need to be and where we will be at certain points during the search. As far as screening and selection for the interviews, with Career Gateway, everybody applies online. So Britta talked a little bit about there's clearances and that type of thing. During the recruitment period, we are also working with them to build their credential file, so that's their letter of eligibility, that's their clearances, that's their transcripts, those types of things. Career Gateway, we used to collect a lot of that manual, but with Career Gateway now, they can upload that information. So once they've created a profile, they can upload that information and make that available to us, which is one of the things that we kept hearing over the years when we had a manual process, is if you want more candidates, make the process easier. So now we made it about as easy as it can get, because once they create a profile, they can apply very easily to any number of opportunities out there. As far as at the end of the recruitment period, with Career Gateway at that point, we would release the applications to the board members, and you would be able to view these online. You would do an email from us automatically, and we'd give you a password, kind of a login to Career Gateway, and you could review those online. If you wanted us to provide you with some copies, we could do that, but Career Gateway makes it very easy, gives you, it's not waiting for things to be copied and mailed. At the end of the recruitment period, you can see them right away and start reviewing those. And you would do that in advance of us coming back, we would come back at that point, and we would sit down with the board, and we would find out from the board what their thoughts were on those applicants. What we would also do, since we do see people all the time, and we go through this process all the time, is we would provide you with any information we might have on those candidates at that time, if we've seen them, we know things about them, that kind of thing. It makes that process a lot easier, and the board can determine at that point who they would like to see for a interview. The interview process is something that we discuss with the board, as to how that interview process takes place. Typically, what we see in a search is we see at least two rounds of interviews, the first round and the second round of interviews. One of the tools, and I just want to go back to it, one of the tools that we also utilize during the search process, I talked a little bit about it earlier, the leadership profile. So as I mentioned, we start by having a discussion with the board in terms of what they would be looking for in that next superintendent. But one of the other things that we do during the recruitment period is we post an online survey on the district's website, and work with the board or whoever we need to work with, the candidate, that out to the community. This survey is open to anyone, anyone in the community, and we encourage as many people to participate in this as possible. What the people indicate in that is, we just keep track of, you know, are you a community member, a parent, a student, staff member, administrator, the different groups, and we kind of, it goes through Survey Monkey, the results are accumulated, and then we're able to present a report to the board that shows, you know, what each group thought were necessary in their next superintendent as far as characteristics and attributes. Another piece of that is, what do you see as the needs, issues in the district, things that need to be addressed by that new superintendent coming in, and then the people can make general comments, and we provide that and report to us. That, along with the information we've got from the board, we use to help develop the leadership profile. And the leadership profile just represents the characteristics and attributes that, based on everything we've heard, these are what have been indicated as important characteristics and attributes in that next superintendent. The list is quite extensive, and obviously you're not going to find anybody with all of those, but you'll see some patterns, and you'll see some things to identify. We utilize that leadership profile not only to, you can use that to help screen the candidates when you first start screening candidates, but can also be used to help develop interview questions. So you can develop interview questions that will prop responses that will hopefully indicate that that candidate has those characteristics, or has those attributes, or can address those areas that are concerned to you. So that's something that we provide at the end of the recruitment period also, as a tool. Once we go through the interview periods, then that's when we begin, between the first and the second round of interviews, that's when we begin our reference check. Once the board has decided on who to bring back for a second interview, that's when we use our research on those candidates as far as references are concerned. Up to that point, it's important that candidate confidentiality is maintained, because a lot of these candidates have not notified their districts that they're looking for a job at that point, so we want to give them an opportunity to manage their recruitment, their application process, and make sure that they get an opportunity to notify their districts prior to being selected, and prior to us making reference calls. So typically, once you've decided on who you're going to bring back that second time, we will give them 24 hours to notify their district, and then, as Britta said, then we will start making calls. They do, as part of the application process, provide us with some references, we'll call some of them, but we will call more people that we've researched in the district, in the districts that they worked in, that were not under reference, so that we can get a good comprehensive picture of each candidate. And we will go ahead and follow that through, so that we can provide you with a good comprehensive verbal report on that. As far as, once you have selected a candidate... As far as once you have selected a candidate, that's where if you need some help from us to provide some guidance on what we've seen as far as superintendent contracts and such, we can do that. If you need some information on compensation of superintendents in similar-sized districts, similar demographics and such, we can also provide that and provide you with what we've seen based on what you've told us you want us to look at, provide you with information that ranges as far as minimum, median, maximum ranges at that point, and follow through that process with you and offer any kind of support that we need, that you need at that point. Because as was indicated earlier, we do, even if there's a question we can't answer, we have the association behind us and we have people that we can go to and we can give those answers for you. The program I just described is the Executive Search Program, which is the full-service program. We do attend every interview. We manage the candidates throughout the entire process, so you don't have to. And we manage the candidate communication from the start to the end. And we're their contact person through the whole thing. There is an administrative support program that you see in there also. That's a program whereby we would do the advertising improvement and we would do the reference checking at that point, but basically, that's where that program stops. But again, with the menu of options, if you wanted to expand a program or customize a program, we could do that also. The one thing I will point out is with our Executive Search Program, we are with you until you have a superintendent. So let's say we go through the search and maybe you select the final candidate and something happens because, you know, as Brenda mentioned earlier, sometimes something's happened. So you get to the end and you can't come to the agreement with that candidate or something else happens or they're in a lull somewhere else. We would have a discussion with you at that point, what are the options that we've seen, what can we do next, and talk through those options. If the board directs us at that point, no, we want to start all over again, we start all over again. There's no additional expenses at that point because like I said, we're with you until you have a superintendent. So regardless of what that pays, we're going to work with you until that happens. We also, with that program, do have a guarantee. If the superintendent leaves the district for any reason within the first year, we would redo that search for 25% of the original cost. The cost that you see there is the cost. We don't add expenses, we don't do anything other than that unless you ask us to do some extreme mailing or, which we never see anymore since the internet came out, or you wanted to advertise in some other publications that would be based, that would be the only change. But other than that, that's your cost. As far as working on the search, both of us will be working with the board in the search. So it will just be one consultant who will be helping us working through the search at that point. For the rest of the proposal, you can see our background, you can see our references. And at that, what we'd like to do is just turn it over to the board if they have any
I have a couple of questions as far as the timeline. What do you think a reasonable timeline is if we bring you in to find a new superintendent?
What we found as far as the timeline is concerned is that from the date that the board approves working with us, that it's probably a six-month timeline. Now, what that six-month includes, it could be less, what it includes is typically if you hire somebody who's already working for a district as an administrator, there's at least a 60-day notice built into their contract. So that could be shorter if the district let them leave earlier, depending on what time of the year it is, or it could be shorter if that person is not working at that point. The only other place where you can really kind of take some time off would be the advertising improvement period. We don't usually recommend doing that. Normally, we would suggest a six-week period for that, but we might be able to cut it by a week maybe. We wouldn't recommend too much more than that. The way our timelines work, once the advertising recruitment period is over, we move pretty quickly.
And how about in terms of the Survey Monkey for the community that you spoke of? Is that something that would be done prior to getting any candidates in for interviews?
Yes, we would normally do that during the advertising recruitment period. So usually, probably a week or two after we start advertising and recruiting, we would work with whoever we need to work with in the district to get that survey on your website. We would also have a discussion with the board as to how do we best communicate this to the most number of people out there to let people know that that's available. Normally, we would leave that up for two weeks. We could leave it up a little bit longer if need be, but we kind of monitor that as we go through as far as what kind of participation you're getting and we let you know how that's going as far as the participation is concerned.
So that's something that's handled by you, but just run through our website, I guess?
Yes.
Can you just touch on what the, if we didn't want to go with the full Executive Search Program, what support you would offer in the administrative support program? Would that include the offer to help with the contract details and the compensation?
Yeah, that normally is part of the Executive Search, but I'll let you speak to it if it's not part.
You know, if you're going with administrative support and you want a range, certainly as a member of the committee, we provide that to you. If you want more of a specific analysis, a range based on other criteria, based on your finalism, that typically probably more per the Executive Search Program that's where involved throughout that process.
And then if we do a national search, the district would be responsible for bringing candidates in from across the country if somebody applied, if we thought they were going to fit?
Sure. Good question. Actually, one of the things that we talk about in our initial meeting with the board is how do you want to travel? How do you want to handle travel costs? I can tell you what normally happens. If you bring somebody in for a first-round interview, regardless of where they're coming from, that's their done at that point, and they understand that. Where it might be, you might incur some travel costs would be, let's say that out-of-state candidate you want to bring back for a second interview. Typically, that's where we see boards say, we'll pay reasonable travel expenses at that point. And again, I mean, that's a board decision also. I mean, it doesn't mean you have to, but that's what we see typically.
Do you employ Skype at all?
For interviews? We try. We try. It's better if you have somebody there, but we haven't used it. Yes, we have. Where, you know, I can, recently in the search, a candidate was getting an award for the district down in Florida and couldn't be there for the interview, so we had that person sent.
Do you keep any statistics on bringing superintendents into this area from outside of Pennsylvania and whether or not they last or if they acclimate to them?
Well, not really. We had, we didn't have, we did see that for a period of time, we had a certain number of candidates from out of state. We didn't track it by the particular area. As far as how long a superintendent lasts or how long they were in the job, we didn't track that. There's so many factors involved in that with superintendents, length of contract, changes in the board, changes in directions of the district and such, that, you know, we haven't really tracked that either.
Do you have any statistic that shows superintendents brought in from your search that lasted the full length of the first contract successfully?
No, but I've looked at such data before. I think it's pretty high in terms of lasting the length of the first contract. The renewals become a little more challenging based on other factors, you know, those coming in based on it being an intended last contract, some of those elements, fairly high. The other thing that potentially could have affected this would be at 141, if there's now more specified bio provisions built into contracts, which historically wasn't the case. And so, you know, I think it was historically high now that there's more of a delineated means for ending a contract, that could be subject to changing over time.
So I'm a factor.
Have you ever been involved in a contract as part of a team from like, say, the district? If the district put a team together, would you be willing to be a part of that team? For instance, I just did a team-based program with Mrs. Muck in the back of the room where we had multiple people from the city that we had involved in a process that we did. I was just wondering if you were ever involved in something like that?
Well, I'll tell you where we usually see that involvement is we see that involvement in the second interviews. As I was talking earlier, candidate confidentiality is real key in the beginning, so it's usually best if it's the full board that's involved in the initial stages of it. Now, once the board is moving a person to a second interview and we're doing reference checks and such, then what we've seen, and we do this all the time, is we've seen that various, the board wants to get various groups involved in it. So that a candidate's second-round interview can involve not only an interview with the board, but it can involve interviews with various groups as defined by the board at that point. So yes, we have that.
When you say that you do references from the list that they give you and then outside references, how do you determine the outside references, the people that you call?
Sure. The way we do references is we like to, you know, if they give us references on a list, we talked before, that's a lot, that are on the list, but the rest of them are usually off the list. And what we do is we research the district that they worked in. So when we're researching that district, we want to know, who did they supervise? Who supervised them? Those are the people we want to talk to. We usually like to talk to the union presidents. We like to talk to business managers to find out about their financial skills and such. And then when we start making the calls, after we've researched the district and identified people, then when we start making the calls, if we hear something that may be of concern, then we ask that person, who else should we speak with? And then we kind of just follow that. We, you know, if we just get somebody that has one thing to say about a superintendent and that's the only time we hear that, you know, we don't see a pattern, so it's not as much of a concern, it shouldn't be as much of a concern for a board at that point. Because if you're a superintendent or administrator and you haven't upset somebody, that just means you've never made a decision, so, because every decision you make is going to upset somebody because you can't please everybody all the time. So we just want to make sure that that is not happening. But we do some extensive research on all the different stuff that we're doing. And as Brenda was mentioning, if they're out of state, we talk to our counterparts in that state. We find out what their reputation is and we find out additionally who should we talk to in that state also.
I have an additional question about vetting. In addition to these references, what other pursuits does the association follow regarding, not just a criminal background check, but lifestyle background checks? I mean, is there a possibility of an unsupported family somewhere?
Well, there are certain things, there are certain things by law that you can't ask and certain areas you can't go into. What we've seen recently with some boards is they have wanted us to do the social media check because social media is so hot out there. What we did was we contracted with a company out of California about a year ago. So if the board wants us to do that, then, you know, there is an additional fee for that, depending on what size of report you want. Then we go through the approval process from the candidates because those types of background checks are covered by the Fair Credit Reporting Act. And then we go ahead and we do those social media checks and provide that information to the board also.
But in terms of, say, a private investigator firm, you don't use that type of facility?
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Leclair? Thank you, Mr. Leclair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time. We have our information there if you have any other questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I think we're going to have about a few more meetings. I have a few things I would like to, and when we interview these candidates that they send to us, I would like to have a committee that's extended, not only the school board. I have jot-downed a few of the things I think that people we should have on this committee. First of all, it should be president of the school, chairman of the education committee, one administrator, one union member, president of the chamber of commerce, a member of the judicial hearing, chairman of the education department, University of Scranton, chairman of the education department, Marywood, and the PTA president. I think this would cover our community, getting involved in picking of our next superintendent. It's very important that we do this. I think this is best when they bring the candidates in for an interview, this is the committee that should, in my opinion, this is the committee that should be doing the interviewing at the beginning.
Well, I just want to note though, we have to decide if we in fact want to have them come in and do this. So we'll have to have a vote for that. And, you know, it's something we have to talk about, I guess, and, you know, there's a cost associated with it, of course. But I think after-
I think it's important that we get involved with this school board association because they can do, get some good candidates and they can vet them for us.
Right.
And then they can come up with four or five individuals that we could interview or this committee could interview.
So, I mean, the reason I think why our solicitor said that maybe we should have this as a voting meeting tonight is if we wanted to take a vote on moving forward. I don't know if anyone's prepared to do that, but after hearing his timeline, I think we're also going to have to look to appoint an acting superintendent because six months is a long time to be without a leader. So that's another meeting, maybe, maybe under the education committee.
The next couple of months we're covering.
Right.
So if we have another, next meeting or two, we can discuss on having an acting superintendent.
Or possibly even directing Martinelli an executive session just for the discussion of this process. I mean, it might be helpful just to have that on our agenda.
I hope the board realizes that we've been taking a lot of flak. We've got to go off to the community and have them involved in picking what we consider to be the best superintendent for the district.
It affects the entire city and I like the idea of that social monkey process where people can put in questions that they would like to ask of a candidate and they can voice their opinion with that. All right, next on the agenda, we have visiting delegations and I have Kathy Welby White.
Hi.
Hi.
Please forgive me, I am not public speaking at this point for a little bit, and I had every plan on printing all an email late last night. I hope you all had the time to go over it. I had every intention on getting it printed, but it was a different thing. We're getting it here. So please forgive me, but I'm going to read it from on, that's all.
I think I have a copy of it.
You do? Thank you. Thank you.
This is your April. Yeah, that's your April from 13.
I don't know. Okay, then I apologize. No one else had it printed, did they? Okay, just on the top. Okay.
And I'm sorry, but you're not going to use any names?
No, no, no names. Just the word teacher, okay? And we all know who I am from, correct? Okay. Okay, everybody knows my name's Kathy Welby White, I live within the city. I'm here because of the last meeting, the topic of bullying was brought up meeting in reference to the possibility of, the possibility of maybe, if maybe administrators being bullying my directors, okay? Now, my question is that we all know that we have a teacher that has been bullying our children for as long as we all can remember. There have been a few- New York to get away from him, because he intimidated this poor kid so badly. He has children that have wanted to commit suicide with this man. I am very, very passionate about this topic. I do not want to see him in the position he's in, obviously, from my many complaints and others. I would like to know why I am directing to you, Miss Director McQuiggin, excuse me, because of the topic had come up. And I do direct it to you, because I feel that our students are much more important than the paid employees in this district. I mean, I personally believe that every one of you have taken enough to protect every single student in our district. And to me, everyone of you have failed. Every one of you on this board have known of it for over a year, except with the fact of the new, for the new director, Dean Lott. But I am 100% positive. Emails were sent out from many people, complaints have been called in, complaints have been sent in, and yet you still sit there and get a satisfactory for this year. Please tell me how this man can get a satisfactory if it's these kids. I do not understand this, and I cannot let this go by another day, because this has been going on for days, months, years, and it's to the point where nobody can take it. Everyone is completely fed up. Our children don't deserve this. He calls these children to his home, in his attic, as the children, the boys refer to it, one by one. If these children are accompanied by an adult, that adult is not allowed to walk into his third floor, whether it be his apartment, if it's his parents', I don't know. All I know is that the children refer to it as his attic. Now, they are going to get their uniforms. Why can't they be picked up at the school? Why can't they be picked up at the field if it's time for bed? He is a teacher, he represents strange new schools. And every one of you, this is not new, we all know. Forgive me for being nervous, I'm probably out in hives. There is also somebody that I'd like to say, I do not know what was their name, but there's somebody beyond this panel. I'm not going to say director, I'm not going to say anybody, okay? But I know for a fact that there's a person behind somewhere in this panel, because I've stood with them at his poker games, and I know that they witnessed this teacher, if that's what you would want to call him, because I know. I know for a fact, because I was at the games, watching another child of mine. And I, I can tell you things that this direct, this teacher that I am speaking of as a bully, things that he has said would make every one of you's curl, cringe, sick to your stomach. And I can't believe that you guys have not gone to a game to watch, even for yourselves. I mean, you have so many complaints, why aren't any of you even going to a game to what he said? And don't, please don't tell me that you haven't heard, because I know for a fact that everybody knows, this is not a new topic, none of you. And also, this teacher teaches a health class, okay? During that health class, I always thought that during health, you learn about the body, and whatever, whatever else there may be. Not every single health class be shown Friday Night Lights. That is the topic in his classroom, is Friday Night Lights. You watch Friday Night Lights, he walks out, he goes to the neighboring teacher's room, and yet gets paid. I do not understand how we can continue to let this happen. My bottom line is that these kids need a voice, a heck of a lot more than these paid employees. And please, Mrs. McQuiggin, Director McQuiggin, please be their voice. Please, every one of you here, please be the kids' voice, not the teacher. It's about time you stand up for our kids. Please, I beg of you, no more kids can be hurt by this person. I really would love for your, right now, the other day, I understand it was not a high school game, but he's still a teacher. And the other day, he is being, this person is being from another, I want to say lightly so it does not identify the teacher, okay? I was at a sporting event, and this person happened to be the, not supposed to be the, okay? He wasn't. And I, I was laughing, and I was walking by, and then at every single sporting event that is not supposed to be, walking by and I'm laughing, and I have my head down, and I said, you just don't give up till you're, and I was laughing, and I weren't laughing. And his response to me was epiol, only he said the word. And then he proceeded to verbally abuse another child, this just happened on Saturday. He has nothing, supposed to have nothing to do with this thing, sporting event. And this child of this grade school district was abused again in front of so many people. But nothing gets done. We get the satisfactory. Please, one of you, please give me an answer. I really would love to hear your response. And every one of you, I mean-
Well, I'll answer you, in that there's a process in place. And if it's a teacher at whatever school they're in, the principal is responsible for going into their classroom and making sure they're doing their job, evaluating them, and also whatever sport they're involved with. And ultimately, if something happens where an unsatisfactory is given, and the person disputes it, it comes to board level, where we have to become the judge and jury as to whether or not this person has done wrong. And unless they're given an unsatisfactory, it isn't brought up to us.
Okay.
So, I mean, my suggestion would be that you direct every single complaint that you know a parent made to the principal.
Will it happen?
And ask the principal how he can give a satisfactory to a coach that has, you know, I mean-
I understand that, but you guys are the grade schooler.
Right. But we can't give an unsatisfactory to somebody.
Okay, that's fine, you can't give an unsatisfactory. We need to do something about this. There have been many, many complaints, and I know that for a fact. I know that for a fact, and I don't want you aware of it, I'm not, I mean, seriously. This has to stop, and it has to stop with every single one of you.
Director Martinelli, we, your athletics and stadium, right? We talked a little bit about putting the coaching positions up every year for review. At least then, it would come before the athletics and stadium committee, and they can, if they're aware, they can make decisions and bring it to the full board.
I mean, I'd like to take legal action. I mean, I have a case, I have a lawyer haunting me, and I really do not want to do that, because I have, I have a lot of friends, and I'm not going to say who they are, but I have a lot of friends that I don't want hurt. But-
Well, certainly, we don't want the children hurt. Now, I, I know everyone here appreciates you coming here and talking about this.
They are, they're so tormenting, so bullying, so, I mean, it's beyond any, anything, any one of you, and I wish to God you could fix. I wish you, and there were videos of him on YouTube, and the kids laughed hysterically, because this guy threw so many tantrums, and I approached, they were taken down when I started complaining and sending emails. They were taken down mysteriously off of YouTube, of course. But there are a lot of YouTube videos of him and his tirades and tantrums, as we shall call them, Seating. And I contacted the person that put them up, and of course, they were taken down. But I really beg of you, please, please, I understand the whole process of him getting that satisfactory. I don't, I don't agree with it whatsoever, and I don't think any one of you should agree with it, and I don't think anyone of you should take it. And Mr. Martinelli, you are a sporting gentleman. I really need your, the kids need your help. Please, please, see what we can do for these kids, because not one per kid has to be bullied. None of the kids doesn't have to be hurt. It's not fair. It's not fair that you're standing up for administrators that are paid, or employees that are paid all this money, and you sit here behind your desks, you can stand up for the kids. You need to do that. That's what your job really is, our kids, our kids. And there's not one, there's not two, there's not three, there's not even ten. There's way more than that. And I'm telling you, these kids have come close to suicide, and if any one of these kids get hurt, it's all your fault, all on your heads now, because now the fault's on your court. So please, please do not let this person, I don't like to refer to myself, but please do not let this person continue to hurt, abuse, bully, and harm at our kids. I'm not so happy to say it, but please be our voice.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Before we adjourn, this is my, and I actually have something I'd like to say tonight. Mostly, I'd like to discuss with you, I'd like to address the allegations that you publicly made against me at a special meeting held on Monday, June 23rd, 2014. And let me say that you attacked my integrity, and I would like it known to you and everyone else that I do not appreciate being a target of your political antics. I am here on this board for the sole purpose of giving to my community and ensuring a sound education is provided to the students of Scranton, and also to be a voice of the taxpayers of this city. You accuse me of violating district nepotism policy, and I would like to read the nepotism policy provided to me at the time I was elected to this board. The Scranton School District Code of Conduct in Nepotism, Section 2.5, "Close relatives," and I quote, "close relatives may not be employed where there is a position of influence over another." Close relatives includes husband or wife, partner or child, son-in-law or daughter-in-law, brothers or sisters. A position of influence exists in instances where selection for employment, judgments for concerning performance, compensation, status, fitness for promotion, discipline, or discharge require the action of one person with respect to the other. Please note, the relation of cousin is not included in this policy. You stated that I voted on a specific resolution to hire cousin of mine. For the record, there was no such resolution. The appointment of the individual to whom you referred was made secondary to a consent agenda item dated June 2013, the agenda for which I had no input. Your cousin was recently appointed as a special ed aide substitute. In your tenure, you have publicly voted for substitute teachers, temporary custodians, and summer employ, employees. However, somehow the board's president's cousin was appointed to a position without a public vote. She was hired with no knowledge of this board, and I find it astonishingly hypocritical that you would attack me wrongfully while this occurred with your cousin. It's another case of the board president's hypocrisy and selective amnesia. Thank you.
Ms. Wuhan, I don't think that you have an updated anti-nepotism policy, because it does specify first cousin.
And when did that occur? June 16th, 2014? Five minutes before you accused me of these wrongful acts?
It's in our board rules.
That from June 16th was when we-
From December, no, from December.
When we have-
It would be from December.
June 16th is when we approved Section 300 of PSBA, which is where that was included.
No, I disagree. I'm sure that Mrs. Orr can get a copy of our board rules. You can look at that. And as far as that my cousin you're talking about, I'm unaware of what you are talking about. You just stated-
You absolutely are aware of what I'm talking about.
You just stated that everyone on the board was unaware. We had a vote to hire a cousin of mine? Absolutely not, never.
No, it didn't come public, it was done behind, behind closed doors.
That somebody was hired?
As a substitute.
I have absolutely nothing to-
As a substitute.
Well, that would be news to me, and I'd like Mr. Gaynor to speak on who that might be.
I don't know. Who are we talking?
I don't either.
It's a cousin of yours that was hired for a substitute special ed teacher in this district?
Special ed teacher?
Not teacher, not teacher, aid, aid.
Aid.
And if you think that nobody thinks that you had anything to do with that, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Well, I'd like to know how I could influence that. Did I make a phone call to somebody?
More than likely.
Oh, well.
More than likely.
Mr. Gaynor, if you could look into any special ed substitute aides we've hired, when was this, Dr. Wuhan?
June 11th about, no, I'm sorry, that was the end date, May 12th, 13th, 14th.
If you could find out who that is, please, I'd like to know.
Kathy can tell you after the meeting, though.
We don't want to interrupt, we have more. Oh, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Prior to the conclusion, I'd like to read from a prepared statement. Prior to the conclusion of our board meeting on June 23rd, Mrs. McQuiggin made a number of charges against me that essentially questioned my ethics, as well as my knowledge and basic understanding of public education. Now, as a person who was a professional in the field of education for 44 years, I find myself in a position that I have to answer these charges. I cannot let this go unanswered. Now, if we're going to proceed as a district, in a very difficult time for the Scranton School District, as well as public education in general, we've got to get past the political, personal nonsense that Mrs. McQuiggin has used, as far as my opinion is concerned, as her basic tactic since the board reorganized in December of 2013. Now, in place of the board focusing on the pressing issues facing the district, we are consistently dealing with comments that are useless and baseless, and have nothing to do with the problems and responsibilities that the Scranton School District is facing. Now, the first comment that I want to talk about goes back to the textbook issue at South Scranton Intermediate School. And quite honestly, this is a very simple situation to understand. All the abuscation, all the sound and fury, has really nothing to do with the reality. The students at West Grant Intermediate, the students at Northeast Intermediate have textbooks for all of the subjects which they study. They carry them home when they want, they have absolutely no one else sharing it. The students at South Scranton Intermediate School don't, and they haven't for years. Now, when this was brought to our attention in October of 2013, Mr. Martinelli and I were at the education committee meeting, and we didn't ask for anybody's head here. The only thing we asked for was, fix it. Fix it. Now, the condition hasn't been fixed, and our children at South Intermediate School have gone another year without having their own books to take home when they wanted them and when they needed them. Now, administration attempted to explain this away with talk of new curriculum being required. Why? Our intermediate school curriculum can be rewritten to align with the common core specs, and the textbooks that we are using should be very usable. If we need to upgrade on content, we could do it with complimentary or supplementary material. There is absolutely no need to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. But one reality that's getting overlooked with this is the argument about, well, it's an outdated curriculum. Now, I know Mr. Martinelli remembers Lydia Hammond. She was my Latin teacher at Central. And I remember her bringing this up when we were translating Cicero. And the phrase in Latin is "lex antiqua sed lex," which is loosely translated, it may be an old law, but it's still the law. Now, our curriculum that we have in place is our operating statement. What might be done next year, or the year after, is might be. We still have curriculum. Now, the teachers don't have an option to tell the board, or the principal, or their supervisor, that they don't like the book and they don't like the curriculum. That's just not an option. The only actual involvement that the Board of Education has with curriculum is that when it's brought for approval by administration, we vote to approve- when it's brought for approval by administration, we vote to approve it and the required materials to support that curriculum. There are no options. In the strictest sense, it is the law. Now, any principal who finds a teacher not following the curriculum and using the prescribed materials is required to issue an unsatisfactory observation. And that is absolutely no wiggle room. The principal can't vary with this, and they don't have options either. The Curriculum Council has ordered curriculum drawn, materials to be found through committees of veteran teachers and supervisors. These are inviolate. And until the board votes to change those things, they are how we operate. And to not do so is educational anarchy. And I believe that that's what we've had at South Intermediate School. Educational anarchy. Now, we don't have those options. We don't ignore them, and we certainly don't have the option to not use the curriculum and the materials provided. Now, in the last two and a half years, we have redone curriculum for one academic subject area, and that was secondary math. Now, to offer that as a complaint, that we can't buy new textbooks for South Scranton Intermediate School because a new curriculum is being required, if we use that timeline, we could burn another decade before the entire intermediate school curriculum is rewritten. Now, 10 years, gotta be acceptable for the kids at South Scranton not to have textbooks, or maybe five years would be acceptable. Well, another year isn't acceptable. It's just not acceptable. Now, a figure of $200,000 was used by Mrs. McWigan last week that would be required to fill the textbook repurchase. And of course, they would be outdated textbooks. Well, I have here a quote, "Obtained from the Follett Company by Melissa McTiernan, the principal at South Intermediate, in February for everything she needed. Brand-new books in the warehouse in Illinois for $59,000 and change." Not $200,000. Now, to banny about that number as responsible is hard for me to buy. Quite frankly, it's shameless and it's disingenuous. The second charge brought by Mrs. McWigan was over the appointment by the board of John Marichak as our new supervisor of secondary education. Now, with any details or facts, Mrs. McWigan stated that I violated my own, own newly adopted hiring policy. No details were offered to support this absurd statement. What is remarkable here is that Mrs. McWigan, along with all other eight members of the board, last summer, participated in a collective effort to come up with our new administrative hiring policy. Mr. Martinelli, you were there. Mr. Sheridan, you were there. Dr. Wu, you were there. Was it, or was it not, a collaborative effort? That's a rhetorical question, no answer necessary. If I took credit for that policy, it would be shameless. It was a collective effort by this board. Otherwise, it wouldn't have flown. Now, when we posted the petition for secondary super in the fall of 2013, administration had overlooked the fact that in redrawing the salary scale for the Act 93 employees, we had not moved the salary for the secondary super, probably because of the extended leaves Mr. Marichak's predecessor had. No one really was paying attention. I can almost understand that. Now, we were made aware of this fact following the two rounds of interviews that produced Mr. Marichak as the top-scoring candidate the first time we posted the job. When I became aware of this information, I informed now newly-elected board president McWigan of the situation. We had a number of discussions over a two- or three-day period at length. We realized that we could not redraw the Act 93 salary scale. It was too involved. It had just been agreed upon. To reopen it would have been a calamity. Mrs. McWigan gave me a suggestion that I thought was excellent. Why not add additional responsibilities to the secondary supervisor that would then allow us a reason to pay that position more money than it had been stated? Now, the reason it's a problem is because under the pay scale, the secondary super would be making less money than the people he or she would be supervising. That's an unacceptable condition in industry and in education. So, we had to fix that. Mrs. McWigan said, "Let's add duties." I had two immediate needs that had to be filled, as far as I was concerned, and they were perfect examples of what she had suggested to me. First was the new cyber program that we had contracted with Penn Foster. It was essentially under no single person's supervision. Also, neither did the alternative school that we called the Lincoln-Jackson Academy, who was being run by the Camelot Corporation for us on a contract. Now, they had a director for their day-to-day operations, but we didn't have, apparently administration had overlooked, that we hadn't assigned anyone to that program for oversight. So, both the cyber program and the alternative program were perfect examples of it. Mrs. McWigan had recommended to me, and I thought at the time, and I still do, think they were excellent ideas. We added those responsibilities to Mr. Marichak, to the supervisor's position. Then, we reposted. Now, the cyber program was obviously in need of an issue. It needed supervision. Anytime I asked anybody how things were going with the cyber program, Justin McGregor would inform me that our numbers were growing, because that was his job. Justin McGregor was out soliciting students who had left us for other cyber programs to come back to the school district, and he did a good job. But anytime I asked anybody, "Well, what about the academic progress? Is anybody looking at this?" I get absolutely no answer. Now, that's a harbinger of things that were to come, because out of the 25 regular education students in the cyber program that could have graduated this year, we had one successfully complete the program. That's an abject failure and a big waste of taxpayer dollars. Now, by adding these two responsibilities to the secondary super, we could now justify the increase in pay. We re-advertised the position. It draw an entire new field of applicants, along with Mr. Marichak. We followed the process to the letter. Mr. Marichak came out again on top scoring, as our top-scoring applicant. Now, how this violates our policy is beyond me. However, it hurts the district, our image and our perception when those comments find their way into the press. And quite honestly, with much apologies, it's an insult to Mr. Marichak. And I personally take that, that's a serious issue for me. Now, all of this was without a mention of a word, not a word of criticism or complaint in all of our executive sessions that went on for months in that back room. I would have listened to anything you had to say, if it would have made things better or avoided an issue. I hear about it here on the night of the 23rd. Quite frankly, I don't know how you could describe that as responsible behavior by the board president. Next came the criticism of hiring Terry Whalen, the director of the Lincoln-Jackson Academy. He was here as the Camelot day-to-day director. We felt that we had a successful, really, a very successful year from 2013 and 2014. However, we felt that we could, with the right people, do it cheaper as a district operation. And quite honestly, I think we have to do it cheaper because of our budget situation. Now, we offered the job to Mr. Whalen, who is not a certified administrator, but possesses a very unique set of training skills as behavior modification specialists and really a 10-year veteran of alternative education with disruptive youth. Now, we aren't paying him what we pay principals. And Mr. Marichak will act as the LEA for that facility. Now, we should save close to $150,000 by operating LJ ourselves this year. And that is important, and it's our operation which was important to Director Martinelli. Now, I have some criticisms of my own from Madam Chairman. Where has the leadership been in the non-payment of health care premiums under the COBRA program by former solicitor Harry McGrath? When Attorney Munrora informed the board in March of the condition that Attorney McGrath had 18 months in arrears of his premiums, a total over $27,000 that he owed to the board, where was the call for a full and thorough investigation by the president? Solicitor Munrora called for Millennium, our health care advisors, to audit our current roster for similar irregularities, and though still it's in progress, there has been another retiree found in arrears for $20,000. Now, I believe tonight, and I have stated this publicly, that the district needs to conduct a complete audit dating back at least 10 years for all the retirees who contracted with the district to purchase their health care through the COBRA program covering 18 months. If we found two people in 2014, how many have already gone through this 18-month program and not paid their bill? How much money has it cost the taxpayers in the city of Scranton? If this is the case, is it a criminal conspiracy to defraud the district, or is it just gross negligence and incompetence? We still don't have answers to any of those questions. But our efforts going forward should absolutely involve law enforcement. Has the chairwoman contacted the IRS? Has she contacted the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office or the FBI? To my knowledge, that has not happened. None of this has been done, and it's a complete lack of leadership. Now, on May 5th, Attorney Frank Tunis, who represents our Act 93 union employees, sent a letter to the board. Mrs. McWigan received that letter the afternoon of that meeting. It is, it was shared with no one, and yet it was addressed to the school board. In our executive session, it was shared with no one. However, at the end of the meeting on May 5th, Mrs. McWigan read it to the public with no other mention or any other member of the board even knowing of the letter's existence, let alone its content. Now, if you call that leadership, this is putting the interests of your agenda ahead of the Scranton School Districts, and I personally resent it. The letter contains threats from Mr. Tunis, that board members have been speaking critically of administration employees, that he, if it didn't stop, he was going to be forced into legal action. Now, quite honestly, when I first heard it, I thought it was common. Directors can't hold administrative employees, the people who we employ, accountable for their job performance? Now, I'm going to tell you something. I don't know on what planet that exists, but it's not Earth. Now, Mrs. McWigan has fanned this story into a story with connections at the Times Tribune into a rationale for some recent resignation of administration officials. No names, no incidents, or proof was ever produced that directors harass people. Now, I don't apologize for my behavior in this boardroom. At public meetings, at board work sessions, and at educational committee meetings, I have taken to task administration employees for their failure to act as we ask them to on the textbook issue at South Scranton Intermediate School, as well as the mishandled information dispersment for the LACCO in a college dual enrollment program that was done in February with our students at Weston at Scranton High School. Outdated material with outdated due dates was passed out in February, all being in December and November of 2013. I believe that's our responsibility, and I will not stop. I will not apologize. That is our role. That's why the voters of the city of Scranton put me in this seat, and I'm not stopping. Now, where was the leadership? Where was the executive session called? Why didn't we invite Attorney Tunis? We could have maybe cleared the air on this without the fanning of the story in the print media. Quite frankly, I'm sick of bomb-throwing. That's not how we're going to get work done. Now, the worst failure of leadership, though, came, and I have to say, this one is really personal to me, Kathleen. When we passed a resolution that's really put a correction date on the contracting of a nurse for a special needs student in the Scranton School District that is currently attended to at the NEIU program at the Jefferson Elementary Center. This young client of ours, this young student of ours, has very specific, intense, physical needs. We had to hire someone with a specific set of skills, and we put the wrong date on the contract, by a week. Now, for some reason, you directed that comment at Mrs. Colerossi. I would have been offended if you directed it at HR, whose responsibility it was to write the contract, because it's a small issue that we were fixing. No one was hurt, no one was interfered with. We were having the care that that child needs being provided under our dollar. But then the comment to Mrs. Colerossi that made its way into the press is the one that infuriated me. I hope you're better at developing your IEPs than you handle this situation. Now, IEPs had no relationship to this issue, but as the father of a special needs child who sat through 12 years of IEP conferences, and I'm telling you, they are stressful, anxiety-filled issues. And every single time my wife and I dealt with that IEP, we were faced with the fact that that child of ours, who, how could I have known, was not going to outlive me, was maybe not being given the best possible ability to survive after his parents. That message that made its way into the press affected how many people who don't have my educational background and saying, "Oh, wait. Is my child being handled right? Is the IEP done wrong? Maybe these people don't know what they're doing." That was absolutely the most irresponsible thing I've seen you do. And I'm telling you, it really hurts. Please, for the wife of me, don't do that again. Don't do that again. Now, when I saw that you had directed a comment at Director Wu, I had been doing some research with regard to that, and school board, school directors, people elected to school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. And there is a Pennsylvania State Ethics Commission ruling on an insurance agent, auto, life, health, and home, by Mr. David Goulian. And he's a member of the board, or was a member of the board in Cameron County, Pennsylvania. And in essence, this ruling says that if you sell insurance services to employees of the district and their immediate family, if you sell insurance services to vendors of the district and their immediate families, all of those individuals have to be registered with the board secretary. And you are, going forward, as a person who sells insurance services, your client relationship with them prohibits you from voting on anything concerned with them. Now, I don't think that that's been done up to this point, Mrs. McWigan, but going forward, it should be. And if it's not, I personally, through my legal counsel, will file a complaint with the Pennsylvania State Ethics Commission. Now, you and I know all about lawsuits. We've done that dance before. And you know what? I'm not kidding. This is where I stand, and that's all I have to say this evening.
Well, in response to taking you to task in this boardroom, I would never do that. I would never take you to task for what you do in this boardroom. It's what you do outside of the boardroom. Whether it be attending a teacher in service as a board member, which has never been done, you were the first one to ever do that.
And I was invited. I was invited by Mr. Coyle. That's right. I was invited by John Coyle.
It crosses the line.
What line? What line does it cross? Does it cross the line?
You're a school board member.
Wait, how does that cross the line? My attending and sitting, just sitting in and observing an in-service program? I played no part in that. I was invited by Mr. Coyle to come and see what they did. And you bring Mr. Coyle here. He issued the invitation. It wasn't anything that I did. But I thought, as long as he invited me, I'll go. And I did. And they had a great program, by the way. An excellent program. But I didn't do that on my own. I was invited. And if Mr. Coyle were here, I guarantee you, he'd validate that. But what I do in this boardroom, I'm not apologizing for.
Yes, you shouldn't. I have no problem with anything anybody does in this boardroom. This is where our work is to be done, and I stand by that comment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
No, I don't.
Excuse me?
I have my time, please. Madam President, I need to address you on your quote to the Scranton Times on Thursday night when I was elected to the Democratic Chairman of the city of Scranton. And I, again, on behalf of this board, which you had no quote from any one member on this board, to make a decision and make a quote to the Scranton plate for calling for my resignation.
That was not made on behalf of the board.
Well, it was voted on the Scranton School Board President, and that was in the paper.
It's my title.
But on the question of that, I have no intentions on retiring, I mean resignation. And I want to quote to you, okay, on this board, since you've been on the board, there's been several people that served as the city chairman and sat on this board. And our solicitor, which I have on record, that was on the Scranton... that was on Scranton, Lackawanna County Chairman and sat on this board as a solicitor, that you voted affirmative for him. And at no time called for resignation for him because he was a chairman of the Democratic-
What do you mean I voted for him?
Harry McGrath.
What do you mean? I was uniformed, he was here before me.
We had several directors, Brian Jeffers, Tom Gilbride, okay? That was on this board. You never, in a time period that they were on the executive board of the City of Scranton and the county board of elections, on the county executive board, you never called at any time for their resignation. Now, currently, Mr. Dunhu, I congratulate you on your election and your efforts. I think it was a great job.
Congratulations, Karen.
But at no time, you called for my resignation, but at no time, you called for Mr. Dunhu's resignation, which you show support for Mr. Dunhu. Never asked for his resignation because he was elected to the state committee, and I give him every effort for doing that, and this prior weekend, put on the executive committee of the state committee. Never called for his resignation, but you called for mine. I resent that, okay? And again, I'm saying I will not step down from this board. My services on this board has nothing to do with my services as the Democratic city chairman. My efforts and my devotion to the children of this city is on this board when I sit on this board, and it has no relation to my services as Democratic committee man and to build a better city for all of our people and all of our citizens. So, I resent, Madam President, what you've done, again, on behalf of yourself and this board. I resent it, and I'm just saying you're wrong, and I will not resign.
Duly noted. But the last time I checked, the state committee has no say in local elections.
I bear a pardon with you, ma'am.
And that's why I think that your position indicates a conflict of interest, and that's why I said what I did.
I bear a pardon with you, ma'am. But that gentleman over there, Mr. Dunhu, has a seat on the city committee and the Lackawanna County Committee, has a vote, as much as I do. And I don't do the vote for the committee. It is the committee and members and the ward chairman that make the commitments and make the decisions. I am the chairman of that board. That's all. And Mr. Dunhu would have a vote on that board.
You say that only once the committee member sits on the board, on the executive committee for the county.
Well, it may be you, though, right? It may be you.
It's not me.
Okay, but it may be you, at a certain time, any time it could be.
It could be, but it's not.
Right, okay.
Hopefully it will be.
And I am entitled to my opinion. I did not speak on behalf of the board.
Again, not on the board president, when it says board president, that has nothing to do with the members of this board. Not one of them.
I didn't indicate that.
I'll ask her, raise hands. Does anybody feel that I should resign?
No.
I mean, just journalistically, whenever she's referred to, it's going to be board president, just like board directors. That's just journalistically, so I don't think that, I mean, I'm not saying that she was talking for the board, the best is journalistically.
I definitely was not talking for the board.
It was addressed as the board president, not Captain McWigan. It was addressed as the board president.
But she asked.
And again, she didn't relate to anybody else on this board, not one of these people that were elected here, including Harry McGrath. 10 years that Mrs. McWigan sat on this board, not once, not once, ever asked for his resignation. But she doesn't like me, so she goes after me, and I resent it. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment? Meeting's adjourned.